Good evening. The Committee on Health now reconvened this public hearing. The time now is 5:35 PM. The agenda this evening is Bill 45-33 and also Bill 53-33. The committee did have a first public hearing on these two measures several weeks ago. In an effort to ensure that we would get as much involvement from the stakeholders and the community, we have scheduled this second public hearing. Bill 45, we'll start with that, is an act to adopt the rules and regulations governing the issuance of health certificates by amending Article 4 of Division 1, Title 26 of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. This proposal was sent down to the legislature through the AAA process from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Just to let the public understand as well that when they, before it was transmitted here, Public Health did their due diligence and had a public hearing and invited the community, the public, to come and testify on the proposed changes that they were making. And so, we're here today for that extra layer of public scrutiny. So, we have Ms. Cynthia Naval and Director of Public Health, Mr. Jim Gillen, who are here to testify. And so, if there's anyone else who wishes to testify, I invite you to please approach the desk to my left to sign in and we'll call you forward. So, Ms. Naval and Mr. Gillen. And also, I want to recognize my Vice Chairman, Senator Tony Ada, for joining me this evening. Thank you. Okay, so just, okay, I think that's good. You made me collect my thoughts here, right? So, again, what this Bill 45 is, there were some changes that the Department of Public Health, Environmental Health particularly, would like to make some changes as a requirement to get a health certificate. We did go out, the committee, my office, have went out to, I believe, mostly all the hotels. We had delivered a copy of the bill and a letter requesting that you review it and that if you have any feedback or any comments, you provide that to the committee at this hearing or through a written testimony. We'd also asked Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association to review this, and I know that they had informed us they would be here this evening. And so, if they come in, then we'll ask them to catch up with us. But what we want to ensure that before it's reported out, and we are going to report this out for our next session, is that it gets as much input from the public. And so, we have here now the Director and Mrs. Naval from Environmental Health to be able to answer any outstanding questions and probably also provide us some update with your discussions with GHRA. Mr. Gillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Ada. Nice to see you again. You know, the only thing we did, not we did, but the Division of Environmental Health folks had discussions with the Hotel and Restaurant Association, as we did through the formulation of all of these rules and regulations. And there were some questions and some additional concerns that they had. So, this testimony is the same as what we submitted the last time with two exceptions. Okay, so everything else remains the same, so that's on the record. So, on, and I'm sorry that we don't number the pages, which I like to have people do. The fourth page of this testimony, right towards the bottom, it's Item 17 and Item 18 are the only changes since the last time we met on this. So, Item 17, after discussion with the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, we want to make sure we defined highly susceptible population, and that's mentioned in Section 4411, sub, I guess, sub-persec. Okay, we're requesting for the inclusion of its definition in Section 4404. Highly susceptible population shall mean individuals who are more likely than other people in the general population to experience foodborne disease because they are immunocompromised, children age nine and below, or older adults. Item 18, on Page 22, Line 19, and that references Section 4415, Sub. D. Extend the time period for certificate management certification from three years to five years, which will be consistent with the nationally recognized certification that many managers possess. And there's just a misspelling there, it's consistent, not consist. Okay, that's really the only change. We had also some discussion on which population, which employees should have, should be required to have PPDs. Generally, we're pretty, you know, we restricted it to people who handle food. But we've had some discussion about housekeepers and housekeeping staff. One of the reasons, and this is not to be anything other than have a public health concern, is that a lot of the housekeeping staff now are coming from the FAS, which is fine, it's employment opportunity for them. What we're finding, and we have found in the recent few years, is that we've come across highly multiple resistant strains of tuberculosis. The treatment for that strain can be very expensive. If it involves a hospital stay in an ICU, it's over $500,000. Medication alone is just out of sight. We recently had, we used to be able to say that, you know, those were imported cases. In the last several months, we've had a local case of multiple resistant strain. So, it's here, it's indigenous now. We think somebody, we should be speaking to considering that requirement for employees. We know that the Hotel and Restaurant Association is concerned because that's a cost to the employee, but I think we should be erring on the side of caution. We don't know how virulent this is, you know, it may be more communicable than the old common old simple form. We haven't established that yet, but I think we should be erring on the side of caution. That's all I have on this one, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillen. And maybe Ms. Naval, just for the benefit, I guess, so we have that on record now, we have the changes that you proposed. But if I can ask, Mr. Gillen or Ms. Naval, whoever could, just because there's only a few items here that you propose to change in the proposal, if you can just highlight that for those of us, for those who probably weren't here during the first hearing.
Okay, then, even Section 1, I'm sorry, on the first page, Item 1. You had encouraged us at the March 18 meeting, hearing, that we're, and we're agreeable in retaining the temporary health certificate provision?
Yes.
Okay, because we know that that was problematic.
So, you're removing that?
Well, no, we're retaining it.
You're retaining, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Senator, we're retaining the temporary health certificate, as had been encouraged during the March 18 hearing, but we're also putting some stricter education requirements and increasing the fee for that. We're looking at the, and also shortening the time period before the event, or in one way, lengthening the time period that people have to submit their applications for temporary health certificates to up to three days before the event, and that would give us time to have our staff go out to the event and do some onsite training for those getting the temporary. That was one of the reasons why we had wanted to remove it in our first proposal, was that these people, for the most part, have no training in proper techniques of preventing foodborne illnesses. So, we're leaving temporary health certificates, but we're also, in order to recoup our costs, increasing the fee for a temporary health certificate. So, it'll also encompass the cost of doing an onsite workshop for them at the site of the temporary event.
So, what is the proposed, and so you're asking us to amend it to include a fee that's higher than what it is today?
Yes, the original fee for temporary health certificates, we had no requirements, was $5. The proposed fee is $15, which is still less than having a permanent plus the workshop.
And the requirement would be three days before?
That the latest they could turn in an application would be three days before the event.
I think that's pretty fair.
Also, after discussion with the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association.
I think, sorry, Senator Ada, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just looking at it on page, well, there's no page number, but on the temporary health certificates, that's the $15, right? And then you got an additional for expedited?
If they fail to meet the deadline.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that would be in addition to the $15.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make that clear so that the people will know that if you miss the deadline, then, and I believe it's three days out, then an additional $10 will be assessed, so the total will be $25 instead of the $15.
Correct. And I mean, if it's less than three days before an event, that gives our team little time. These are normally also turned in with the sanitary permit application for the event, so then we'd have to process all of these documents, get them paid for, and get them out to the people who needed them. So, we feel it's reasonable to charge an expedited fee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I know that we had also included in our last proposal the definition of hotel and a senator, excuse me, a health certificate for hotel. After discussions with Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, we've changed the definition of persons employed at a hotel who would be required to have the health certificate. We had used the term "housekeepers," and now we're making the definition more focused on the duties of the person, regardless of their title. So, if they would be cleaning the room or responsible for the sanitation of it in any way, or the movement of food in the room, like stocking the minibars and things like that, then they would be required to have a hotel category health certificate. I believe those are the major changes since the last proposal that we had submitted.
If you can just run down again. So, those are the changes, but now with this proposal, the ones you have the hearing on and the ones you submitted here, if you can list, if you can just go through those.
It might save some time, but we did highlight all the proposed changes.
For the amendment. You're talking about the overall proposal from the current health certificates to what our second proposed amendment is.
That's right.
The institution of health certificates for hotel and for swimming pool. Since the first proposal, some amendment to the category of who's included to have the hotel. Wow. I know we have a list here, there, for all of the proposed changes. Since we were still including temporary, excuse me, temporary health certificates but increasing the fee, we revised and expanded some of the other language for clarity. Also, since we added in hotel and swimming pool, that counts as the expansion of the definition of health-regulated establishment overall. We eliminated the word massage therapy in the definitions and added the term therapeutic massage establishment. That's to keep consistent with the name and the description of the operation that are found in some of our other statutes and regulations. We will no longer be requiring social security number as a means of identification on our applications, and we've expanded the forms of identification we'll accept to include a credit card with a person's photograph on it. New applicants, those who are coming in for the very first time, must apply in person so that we can do the photo and identity verification when they come in. We're going to be requiring a workshop for every category of health certificate. Presently, it's only done for food-related, the eating and drinking and the food, but we've decided that in order to prevent transmission of other illnesses, that it'd be important for us to teach sanitation to the other categories that we give health certificates to, tattoo, cosmetology, swimming pool. We've also decided that if an applicant decides, they can take the exam without attending the training course. Of course, if they do fail that test, they'll be required to take the course. We would like to return the operation of the workshops from its current operator, which is Guam Community College, to the department and do the training ourselves. We've also removed the childhood immunization requirements for those seeking health certificates for employment at cosmetic establishments. We're looking in the future to have a single health certificate for all food-related establishments. Currently, we offer two, but the definition of food establishment has changed under the Guam Food Code, so we're looking to bring in our definitions here in line with the Food Code definition. And for persons who are renewing their health certificate, especially for those who may not have taken a workshop for quite a number of years, we are also going to be instituting refresher training courses for them, workshops. And those are the major differences, along with the definition of highly susceptible population and extending the expiration date for the manager's certification course.
Thank you very much. So, Cynthia, you guys had discussions with GHRA and some of the other hotels, or was it just with GHRA?
It was just with GHRA who attended. We had two meetings with them, yes.
Okay, so, you know, we would trust that they had relayed this to their members and to the other hotels?
Yes.
Okay.
They sent us a list of questions after the initial meeting, and we responded to those, and they, the second meeting was yesterday, and they were sending out those responses as well as our proposed amendments to the membership.
Okay, great, thank you, Senator Ada. Do you have any questions?
No, that's it.
That's it. If not, we don't have anyone else. Does anyone else wish to testify on this bill? I see people from the industry here. If you do, I would invite you to please come forward. If not, then we would go ahead and move on to the next bill. Okay, you can stay here because you're with the next bill too. Okay, great, so thank you very much. We now move on to the second item of the agenda, Bill 53-33. This is an act to adopt the rules and regulations governing the sanitary operations and inspections of temporary workforce housing pursuant to subsection 21, 102 of Chapter 21, and subsections 26, 305 of Chapter 26A, Title 10 Guam Code annotated. And like the first proposal, this was also submitted by the Department of Public Health and Social Services through the AAA process. We've also had a first hearing on this bill several weeks ago, in addition to the hearing that the department had on this proposal. I wanted to ensure that we get the stakeholders aware of this and get their input. So, now, we do have Mr. Greg Massey, Mr. Thomas Anderson. If I call you, can please come up, please? Mr. Ku Sin is here. If you wish to testify, you can come up. Mr. James Martinez. Okay, and then I'll, Mr. Gillen is here, you can stay, Mr. Gillen. Cynthia, you can also join us, you just pull a chair up for her, please. Right here, you can pull it up. Thank you very much, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Senator. I just have some, I didn't prepare anything in writing, so I just have some verbal testimony that I'd like to present. Testifying on behalf of the Department of Labor, my name's Greg Massey, I'm the Administrator of the Alien Labor Processing and Certification Division. 99% of the regs we're totally in favor of, they pretty much mirror existing OSHA labor camp regulations, so the department doesn't really have too much of a problem with that. There's a couple issues, and they're more rudimentary issues than just the regulations that we wanted to suggest and give you guys some, I mean, it's up to you guys to decide what policy direction you want to go on it, but I did notice that on Page 6 of the proposed regulations, the definition of temporary worker. So, really, if you look at, there's three different sections, I guess subsections there that define what a temporary worker is. All boiled down, it basically means anybody that comes to Guam for a project or for a certain duration. That includes US workers, I mean, it includes a lot of people that I don't know the regulations meant to capture. Typically, temporary worker camp regulations were designed to make sure that we don't have any of these shanty town kind of barracks out there, or that we don't have foreign temporary workers victimized by unscrupulous employers that are trying to cut costs on housing. But under this definition, if you really look at it, it says a worker from a point of origin outside of Guam who's sponsored by an employer or has come to seek employment. So, if you really look at it, that could be, say, ABC Construction has their main engineer come in from California, they bring him here, put him in a house, that's now temporary worker housing, where typically it wouldn't be. A military serviceman that's here for a certain duration of time, that's come here to work on Guam and leave when he's done, that could be considered temporary worker housing under these definitions. Consultants that come here, maybe you get a tech firm, for instance, that sends a guy to do market research for three weeks, you put him, you know, or say, a few months, you put him in an apartment, say, maybe at Oka Towers or something, that now becomes temporary worker housing under these definitions. So, at least, that's the definition of temporary worker, we might need to tweak a little bit. Now, also, on the definition of temporary workforce housing, this is the definition that's in another local law, and I think it's Public Law 3172. Several years ago, the definition of workforce housing was changed to say 51% of any, if 51% of the people living in a housing unit are temporary workers, that now becomes workforce housing. Before, I think Public Health was using, there was what we'd call a five or more rule. If you have five or more unrelated people in a dwelling, then it's workforce housing. If it's less than five, it's just an apartment, you know, it's unregulated. So, you know, this 51% is kind of problematic now, because like I said, you put one guy in a 10-bedroom house, regardless of the space or whatever, it's workforce housing. So, the reason I bring it up is, even with foreign workers, if we were to say, now, again, the definition doesn't say foreign workers, so we're talking about US citizens, foreign people, it doesn't differentiate. But even with foreign workers, with H2 workers, under federal regs, workforce housing is optional. You can't force them to stay anywhere. If they want to, if they come to Guam, even an H2 worker, if he comes to Guam and he wants to stay with his auntie who lives here, he has the right to stay with his auntie. We can't force him to stay in workforce housing. Okay? That's in federal regs. Or if the guy comes here and gets married, you know, or if he just wants to, you know, live it up in Tumon and he wants to pay for his own, workers have that right, you know, to be in their own private housing. Okay, so, the other thing is, it may not seem like a big deal, well, okay, so it's called workforce housing, but once you call something workforce housing, now the zoning laws kick in. So, now, say you put that one guy in that house, now that house has to be in an M1 zone, or you've got to go to the TLC and get conditional use. It's got to have, be connected to a sewer system, it's got to have a chain leak fence, it's got to meet all the OSHA labor camp regulations, you know, so we've got to be careful about what we call workforce housing. So, how do we fix? I kind of recommend, and the department recommends that, you know, and again, this is really depends on if you guys intend it, if the, you know, if the, and it's totally within, it's a policy decision. If you guys intend to regulate US workers, you know, or all workers, and just call them all the same, you know, if you're a temporary worker, regardless if you're foreign or US, well, that's a policy decision if you want to make that. We don't recommend it, though, because anytime you try to tell a US worker where he can stay, you're probably going to get into a slippery slope. We recommend maybe limiting to foreign workers. So, I've got some suggested verbiage, maybe to say that the definition of a foreign, I mean, of a temporary worker would be a foreign worker from a point of origin outside of Guam who's sponsored by an employer to work on a specific project or for a specific period of time, who will reside in employer-provided housing. Okay, so it kind of is the same as what they have here, except what we're saying now is that it's a foreign worker and that they're in employer-provided housing. That limits it just to that population that I think we were trying to initially protect in the beginning, and it leaves that out for consultants and US workers that come here to look for a job, or people maybe that are being brought in by construction companies, if they bring in their engineer, you know, typically they have a house for him, you know, you don't want to call that, you know, or do we want to call that employer housing? That's really going to be a policy decision, that's up to you folks. I would suggest also on Number 2 and 3 on Page 6, we would just delete that, if you guys wanted to just do one definition. And then the temporary workforce housing definition, again, suggested, it's, again, totally up to you folks, but if it was me, I would suggest maybe changing it to saying, temporary workforce housing, also known as dormitory, shall mean any dwelling or living space established, operated, rented, or used by a sponsoring employee as living quarters in which five or more temporary workers shall reside. Okay, so, again, we would suggest reverting back to that five or more rule, it's a lot easier, because say that you, the 51% rule, say that you've got a 20-unit apartment, and you move a couple foreign workers in, how do you determine every unit in that 20-unit apartment and decide what 51% is? You know, how's, even a landlord, how's he going to know every person in every apartment, what their employment situation is? I think it might be problematic to try to issue a dorm permit if, unless we now require that landlords know every single thing about every person living in their units. I mean, it might be something problematic. The other thing that we suggest would be, if you're going to change that definition, I know what they did is they mirrored the definition in Public Law 3172. So, that's in statute. So, I would also suggest maybe sticking in, maybe changing Section 5 of the severability clause to 6 and adding a new Section 5, saying you're going to amend Title 21, Article 3, Chapter 61, Section 61, 309, C1, to be in the same definition that's in the rules. Because otherwise, right now, we have two or three definitions of what workforce housing is. What's great about these rules is they're coming together, it's just, I don't know if we want to have that definition. There's been some clash in the past where the zoning law says 51%, Public Health says five or more. I think DPW or somebody has another four, or no, there's another one that says four or more somewhere, you know, so it's kind of, when employers come in, typically we're the first point of contact. When they come in, they say, what do I need to do to set up a labor camp because I'm going to bring in 100 guys? And we have to be able to kind of pass this information on and say, you know, we don't want to just say, well, I don't know, go check Public Health, you know, we need to be able to understand it. And I think the five or more rule is really easy to understand for someone to say, okay, if I'm going to bring in 10 guys, I know I got to go get traditional barracks, or I got to go get three or four apartments, you know, and put five in each. So, that's the suggestions that we had. I can give you my notes if it helps. I'm sorry. But with these changes, what we've, what I think would accomplish is we could regulate only those workers that, which the Governor of Guam has authority over, which pretty much are the H2s. You know, you're not trying to regulate US workers or people that we didn't intend to regulate. We would be synchronizing the varying definitions. We preserve the rights of US workers to live where they want without government saying, hey dude, you got to get a dorm permit for your, you know, one-bedroom apartment in Tumon. You know, we don't necessarily want to do that. And that, yeah, that's pretty good.
Okay, great.
And I'll give you a copy of this, but it's not formalized, so just, and that's pretty much all I have. Oh, and with one other thing, there's one section that says it shall be a violation if doors are locked in the dormitory. We kind of feel that maybe that might need to be looked at too, because all the workers' belongings are in the dorm, and if they kind of need to lock it because they all go to work, and if you leave it open, that just leaves it susceptible to, you know, we don't want the Public Health to come and say, oh, the doors are locked, you guys are in violation, and, you know, there's like, hey, my passport and my money's in here, you know, so they need to be able to lock up.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much for that input. Mr. Martinez?
I'm with you personally.
Yes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Anderson. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Let me try this one.
Can we just turn on and make sure the red light is on, please? There you go.
There you go, can you hear me? All right. Good afternoon, I'm Tom Anderson, Vice President at Black Construction, and I also sit on the Board of Directors for the GCA. Greg has pretty much covered the issue of, one of the issues that we had, and that is the definition of the worker from the origin outside of Guam. We do bring in people from the United States, from our parent company, perhaps an engineer or supervisor, will put them in an apartment, and right now, the definition says that if he put them in an apartment, he will now occupy a hundred percent of the apartment, and he's now considered temporary, it's considered temporary workforce housing. I think that has to be changed, Greg has addressed it, but it, it's a cumbersome situation, because it is an ongoing thing. We do bring people from the United States. So, again, maybe, point of origin outside of Guam, I don't know how to address that all, because ours are from the United States, but outside of Guam. I know that James has brought some issues about people who maybe come in from the outer islands, I don't know. So, how you can appease that remains to be seen. I don't have a recommendation, other than it's just a complaint. Another issue that was brought to my attention was the, again, the locking of the doors. I know our men are really hesitant about leaving the doors open, and someone going rummaging through their stuff, especially their passports, their personal belongings. I believe that was in there for reasons that Public Health wanted to make inspections, but I believe, it seems to me that they can make appointments to come in there, and not prevent the locking of the doors to safeguard their belongings. That's another one. The other one, on page 10, you have, "Facility sites shall have recreation space for occupants based on the maximum facility capacity." That's not really clearly defined. What do we have to have? A football field, a basketball court, a pool room? Somehow, that's got to be defined. The way it is, it just says, "Based on maximum facility capacity." Now, whether that's defined in any other of the regs, I don't know. But, excuse me, James, is it, do you know? Okay, well, he may, he may address that. On shelters, on page 11, it says, "Each room used for sleeping purposes shall contain at least fifty square feet of superficial floor area for occupant at least seven-foot ceilings." But then, on G part, it says, "All living quarters shall be provided with windows in which the total area shall not be less than one-tenth the total floor area." We have situations where we're providing air-condition units in our units, and to put in a five, for instance, if you've got five hundred square feet, you've got to put in a five-by-five window, for other, what reason, I don't know, other than it says for ventilation. I believe there should be something added to this, that if, if a mechanical device of some sort is provided for the ventilation, then the area size of the window should be either adequate or adjusted in such a manner that, if nothing else, leaving a crawl space to get out in case of a fire, but no reason to put in a huge window, taking up a lot of wall space, when in fact, we're putting the air conditioning systems in. That's all I have at this point in time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Senators Rodriguez and Ada, for allowing us to testify. We share the same sentiments with what Mr. Massey had mentioned, with the definition of a temporary worker, and, so I don't want to beat that like a dead horse. On the other side of the coin, a lot of the rules and regulations that were promulgated by Department of Public Health and Social Services were actually taken, mostly in part from 29 CFR, which is the OSHA standard, which they called labor camp standards. And so, some of the issues that Mr. Anderson was bringing up with the specifications on the facility, is actually, those are actually OSHA federal regulations for those type of housing. However, OSHA has never been, hasn't been on Guam for a long time, specifically for workforce housing. I think the last time a lot of companies, when they bring in their H2 workers, had a labor camp or a compound, was back in the, you know, early eighties, maybe the early nineties, up to that point, and there haven't been inspections specifically for the workforce housing. The new housing that was built, Okadu Workforce Housing, that was built about five, six years ago, was never, I don't know if it was ever inspected by OSHA. But what I suggest is, because we've got that, rules and regulation there, we can even follow that, and cite that we're using 29 CFR, OSHA regulations on the labor camp for Guam, otherwise, go with what the Department of Public Health and Social Services has put together, but then tweak it so that it really applies to Guam, and addresses the concerns of Mr. Anderson, and probably other folks out there who are going to be managing these types of, I guess, dormitory, if, for lack of a better word. I think that's the definition that we're using in this case. So, that's one thing that we could do with that. But otherwise, it's pretty much a federal regulation already in place. The Department of Defense, for all their DOD contracts, cite this also, 29 CFR, as their specifications for workforce housing, for contractors working on federal projects, we're going to be bringing in non-immigrant workers from wherever. The, another thing that I was looking at, was the Section 41, subsection 41723, under the title of fees. Inspection security deposit. The inspection security deposit is required for all temporary workforce housing facilities under 22 GCA, Chapter 7, Section 7119. Companies that bring in non-immigrant temporary workers, H2B workers, already pay $1,091 per person, per year. The thousand dollars is for the registration fee, and is to be deposited into the Manpower Development Fund, of which some of that money, I think thirty percent is used by the Guam Department of Labor, and the other seventy percent is used for apprenticeship training, and is to subsidize that training over at the Guam Community College. Then, the ninety-one dollars, which was a bill and now a law that was introduced by Senator Ada, also applied a ninety-one-dollar fee for health inspections that are supposed to be deposited into the Department of Public Health and Social Service Sanitary Inspection Revolving Fund. So, why does a company need to put a security deposit, and pay for the inspection fee, when they're already prepaying it by paying this fee upfront, when they bring in these H2B workers? And then, when you look at the fee schedule for what is being proposed here, if you've got a facility that's over $6,000, you're just looking a little bit over 300 bucks for this, the renewal sanitary permit, which includes the inspection. So, 6,000-square-foot facility can house maybe ten, I don't know if you want to call it, maybe more, ten workers, multiply that by ninety-one dollars per worker, you're looking at $910, which is way above and beyond the $300 fee for, which is five cents actually a square foot, but let's assume 6,000 square feet at $300. So, there's some conflicting things going on there, with what the company pays for, to bring in an H2 worker, the registration fee on top of that, now the sanitary inspection fee. The sanitary permits and the dormitory permits are slightly different, that's the cost of doing business, you've got to pay for a permit, and, you know, that's just regular cost of doing business. But the inspection fees, which are already taken out, are already actually paid into this revolving fund by the contractor who brings in these workers, should be sitting in an account somewhere, accumulating money. I don't know if there's been a recent inspection of any workforce housing in the last five years, that allows the department to draw from that special fund. And we're anticipating, maybe even up to 5,000 in the next couple of years, that's over half a million dollars in inspection fees alone, to do these inspections. Far less, oh, sorry, far more than what is being proposed as a permit fee, which includes the inspection. So, somewhere along the line, the math was not done right, or somebody just wanted to make money off the backs of these contractors who bring in these workers. But those are the things that I, I just had a, pretty much a one and a little, maybe a two-time read on this, but those are things that really stuck out. I think that before the legislature adopts the rules and regulations as Article 17 in the, in the GAR, that maybe the rules and regulations should again be discussed with some of the stakeholders involved. Those are the potential operators of workforce housing, contractors, or other businesses that are in the business of providing workforce housing facility, so that we can go through all this. As far as the specifications with the facility itself, that's something that's going to probably take an act of Congress to change, because it is already a code, code of federal regulations, and I don't know if we can do anything to change that, except to probably get the Congress involved, or some of that, but those are already OSHA regulations. And I guarantee you, I've had conversations with OSHA, that it's on their radar, and they're going to start to, they were asking me about workforce housing, and they haven't done an inspection, like I said, since the early eighties, and maybe the, up to the early nineties. And so, now, with the buildup, getting, going back on track, we're seeing a lot of these workforce housing facilities being built and constructed, and they still got to meet these OSHA requirements. And contractors and operators of these facilities are under scrutiny of OSHA as an enforcement arm, and of course, they're going to be subject to fines if something is not, you know, done properly, or out of whack, so. But I understand the sanitary permit side, where you've got to inspect the kitchens, make sure it's clean and sanitary, that's, that's one thing, but the facility itself, already there's rules and regulations for that, it's being adopted by Department of Defense, and it should be cited in this, in this GAR, as using 29 CFR, OSHA standards, 1941-142, something like that. So, anyway, that's, that's all I've got. I want to be providing some kind of written testimony to memorialize everything I said in writing, so that at least you can have a better understanding of what I've kind of mentioned today.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. You know, the, once, when this was transmitted to the legislature, we have ninety days to either just let it sit there, or introduce a bill, and have it heard, and then pass it or reject it. So, if we don't do anything by May 6, I believe, the day this automatically becomes adopted. And so, what I hear from you is, you want more time to discuss what's in this proposal, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I think, I don't know what the attendance was for the last public hearing, or the AAA process, if there was any. I don't know if it's, you know, it was probably noticed, but nobody responded, because we didn't see it in the paper, or, I don't know, I just, but I think, something like this, which affects a lot of contractors, I think that our organization at least should have been noticed, or notified, and said, you know, "If nobody shows up, then, I guess, we'll accept it." But I don't think I recall ever getting a notice of a, some kind of a public hearing on this particular bill, or on this particular rules and regs that were promulgated.
So, what the committee will do is ensure that we refine, you know, we find a medium of compromise here, right? Want to make sure, we understand what this was submitted, want to protect the health and welfare of the community, and those workers that come in, but also, we want to ensure that we listen to the, you know, to you folks, who are bringing in these workers here, especially for this buildup. So, we'll figure something out before May 6, to make this work, so that we'll ensure that your, you know, your concerns are addressed. But it's something that we'll have a markup after this, after this public hearing. And this is the second public hearing, we wanted to make, because the first time, we didn't have anyone else come around, so we made that extra effort to get you guys here. But I understand that, did you have something?
I was just told that I was a worker, and I asked them about the regulations that they were going to implement.
Okay. So, yes, she's from DEH, so I'll have Mr. Gillen and Ms. Nival.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. Probably nobody showed up, because it was St. Patrick's Day. And I'm the only Irishman in the place, I think, but, anyway, and I was here. We, you know, you have our testimony, that's not going to change, but we're not, we're not averse to going around this one, again. We had our first, I think, public hearing on August 2, 2012. Okay, and at that, that meeting, there were people, James, I don't even know if you were part of that GCA by then, or whatever, but, anyway, there are some valid points, okay? As far as making money on the backs of contractors, well, you know, we have a lot of unfunded mandates, we can use the money. But I think there's, you know, there's some reasonable discussion that we can engage in, about trying to make this thing work. There's probably only two of us here, old enough to remember what some of those construction worker camps look like, and the reason why we're trying to do this is to avoid that again. Okay? And I think using the OSHA guidelines and the CFR, whether OSHA's here or not is irrelevant, because they make sense, okay? We're concerned about the safety and the health of the employees. Things like locked doors, unlocked doors, I think we get around that, that kind of stuff. As far as our ability to go and inspect a facility, I don't think we'll make an appointment, but we might call somebody up and say, "We're coming in an hour and a half, can you have somebody come by?" Because if you give too much notice, that's a tendency to, you know, you do more housekeeping then, than you, you know, when you're expecting your guests, you really get your house clean. So, you know, again, we can work around a lot of this. We don't want to make this, you know, just, you know, not workable for everybody, but we do want to make sure people, those employees who are here temporarily are safe and taken care of. As far as where they come from, I don't know. I mean, I can remember when, there were times when Texas was really in bad times, and we had guys coming over here, looking for any kind of job, and maybe they would have lived in any kind of condition, just because they needed a job. So, I'm not sure, just because you're coming from the US, whether you should be exempt. Maybe looking at these specialty things, like engineers, architects, partner, you know, those kind of contractors in an apartment, or in a condo, or something like that, maybe we can make some accommodation for that, and we'd have to just tweak the language, but we've been working on this since 2012, you know, and it's nobody's fault, other than, you know, we sent it to the AG, it sat there for two years, for whatever reason, finally got it out, and we've been, so this will be the, you know, the third iteration. It's okay, because we want to, we do want to get it right. Cindy, head up.
I know that some of your objections are to the definitions, but they're taken from Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 26A, which is the authority under which we promulgated the rules and regulations, so we needed to use the definitions that were used in statute for these regulations. And, yeah, 26A is from Public Law 3064, from 2009, and I believe, Greg, you may have been involved, you may have disagreed with the definitions used in that public law, but this is the statute upon which we're basing our regulations, so we do need to use the definitions there.
Okay. So, I think it's clear. What we'll do is schedule a meeting next week, and maybe everyone who has concerns can put all their concerns in writing, and so we'll have Public Health there, so that from there, we can determine how to move forward. Because I tell you clearly, if this comes before the body, because I intend to report it out before the time where it's just going to automatically lapse, I don't believe it would get the support because of the concerns raised, but we want to make sure it's done right. So, the best thing we'll do is have a meeting between all the parties here, maybe sometime mid, mid next week, to iron out, you know, whatever concerns we have. Is that fair enough? Yeah? Okay? Okay. So, we have another, Mr. Koo Sin, that you wish to test, no? Okay. If not, if there's no one else who wishes to testify, this public hearing is adjourned. The time now is 6:25 PM. Thank you very much.